And recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is public participation. Seeing no one, I will move to
Tonight I'd like to talk briefly about a news article that came out on February 8th, 2015, titled "Radnor BOC Considering Resolution to Limit Public Comment at Meetings." This is an article that quotes fairly heavily from Jim Higgins, Vice President of this Board. And in a nutshell, this article talks about, apparently, a proposed resolution, a draft resolution, that would, if put into effect, do the following. Rather, I'll just quote from the article. "A draft of the resolution obtained by the mainline suburban life said members of the public can comment at the beginning of the meeting about topics that are not on the agenda. However, if the topic is on the agenda, they must wait until it comes up. Also, they are limited to five minutes each, and the president may rule out of order scandalous, impertinent, or redundant comments, personal attacks, comments, or actions that demonstrate disrespect for the decorum of proceedings or comments which exceed the allotted time. All questions and requests for information from the public shall be delegated to the president. Citizens, staff, and commissioners may not interrupt the speaker or engage in dialogue with the speaker during public comment." Now, upon hearing about this draft resolution, a couple of things popped into my head. First is that back when President, well, then-President John Nagel was President of the Board of Commissioners, a similar draft resolution was leaked to me. It became a news story, and it was pulled back. But rather than even talk about the substance of this draft resolution, what intrigued me the most is the fact that I've been to almost every single Board of Commissioners meeting in the past year, and I don't recall this topic ever coming up. Now, why is that important? Well, this article indicates that John Rice, the township solicitor, was consulted about drafting this resolution. Specifically, it says as follows. "Vice President James Higgins said a consensus of the commissioners believes the changes are needed, and asked Township Solicitor John Rice to come up with the draft." Now, to be doubly sure that I hadn't just overlooked the meeting, I went and reviewed every single Board of Commissioners meeting that's on Radnor Township's YouTube channel where I wasn't personally in attendance. And you know what? It's never come up. So, one of two scenarios unfolded. Either this board met an executive session and directed John Rice to draft this proposed resolution, or commissioners individually directed John Rice to author that draft resolution. One of the two. Both of those scenarios are untenable. Radnor Township's code, excuse me, its charter, is very, very clear. Under administrative policy, it is the intent of this charter that the board act as a body in relation to all township matters. No commissioner acting individually shall seek publicly or privately to direct the acts of township officials and employees. And just so the record's clear, the township solicitor is a township official. That's set forth in 9.08 of Radnor's Charter. Now, that's under the first scenario, that either one of you or a group of you, rather than a quorum of you, went to John Rice and had him draft that resolution. That's an ethics infraction. The alternative is equally bad. That's meeting as a quorum, an executive session, and tasking John Rice to come up with this draft resolution. Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, again, very clear in terms of open meetings. A meeting, as defined by the Sunshine Act, is any pre-arranged gathering of an agency which is attended or participated in by a quorum of the members of an agency held for the purpose of deliberating agency business or taking official action. Agency business is defined as follows. The framing, preparation, making, or enactment of laws, policy, or regulations; the creation of liability by contract or otherwise, or the adjudication of rights, duties, and responsibilities, but not including administrative action. So that would be, in drafting this resolution, the framing, preparation, making, or enactment of laws, policy. So, the question is, did this board meet in executive session with a quorum to direct John Rice to draft this resolution, or did people individually meet with John Rice and task him to draft this resolution? Who here would like to comment on that?
I could say I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. I take it from that, Commissioner Booker, that you at least were not present in any executive session where that was discussed?
Not to my recollection.
Well, then, is Commissioner Booker accurate in that regard, that this was never discussed in executive session? Mr. Fisher?
I don't recall being discussed in executive session. It may have been, I may not have been present. We're not all present at all times.
Understood. Well, that's at least two people that don't recall this being discussed.
It wasn't discussed in executive session, correct? Everybody knows that.
All right.
So, here is my sense of how we should proceed. That he's asked some questions, we should get him answers to the questions, but my opinion is that these answers have to go through our solicitor because he was involved in this.
And that's extremely disconcerting, if he was involved in this. I won't cut you off, Commissioner Curly.
But clearly, he was involved, correct? As, I mean, you have indicated it, you have stated as a fact that he drafted it.
I quoted directly from the article that states specifically, I just don't want to, because firstly, I was not present. What the article, again, specifically states is, "Vice President James Higgins says a consensus of the commissioners believes the changes are needed, and asked Township Solicitor John Rice to come up with the draft." And as I've just read to you pursuant to Radnor's Charter, and let me give you the exact, specific portion of Radnor's Charter. At Section 2.09H, you are not permitted to individually task a township official with anything. And now that I'm hearing that didn't occur in a public meeting, didn't occur in executive session, and someone went to a township official, John Rice, and asked him to draft something, I'm curious right now. Here's my question. I want to know the identity of the person who initiated that.
So, that's the answer to the question that I think we can get you, but we can't get that unless John Rice is here. And there was a third alternative, which is somebody simply asked him to do that. And I don't know that asking him to do that would be a violation of any type of, either our township charter or an ethics violation, as you had indicated.
Anybody who would individually go to a township official and ask them to draft something that had not been discussed at a public meeting, that had not been discussed at a public meeting.
I have, I ask Bob Zankowski to do things all the time. Probably never a week has gone by where I have not asked Bob to do things. And if that is a township violation, or if that is a violation, then I think there are seven of us that are violating. So, if that's, go ahead.
Don, I don't think you're characterizing that, even for yourself, correctly. As commissioners, as elected officials, we are encouraged to convey concerns, complaints, information from the public to staff. What we are not allowed to do is direct staff in their duty and performance.
Yeah, but I believe I characterized it accurately, that making a request is not directing, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I have asked Bob to have leaves picked up, things removed, trash picked up. Codes would be the perfect example, where I, people present a problem, and I ask Bob to send an inspector out. And that is not directing township staff. If it is, then we have a, you know, we have a lesson to learn for all of us. But I don't view that as directing township staff. And if it is, then let's have it out, and let's rectify it.
I can just tell you right now that, right now, I'm still not getting an answer to the question as to who it was that told John Rice to do that. But if anybody should be conversant in terms of what the language of the charter is, certainly should be John Rice, right? He was tasked with overseeing the Charter Review Committee. And again, I would defer to what Commissioner Fisher just said. That's not talking to somebody on behalf of constituents and saying, "Be advised, a constituent of mine has brought this complaint to me." The way this article reads, it sounds like, again, quoting from the article directly, that there was just this loose consensus of people on this board who maybe either by themselves, or maybe with a group of people, went to John Rice and said, "Draft a proposed resolution." In order to do that, you have to meet as a board. Comes up via new business. Remember, you might recall a situation where you had John Rice, and it was a stupid memorandum, but you had John Rice brought it up, I think it might have actually been you, Commissioner Curly, saying, "Look, we appear to have what may be a conflict between Radnor's Charter and the Sunshine Act as to when we can go into executive session." Or maybe it was you, Commissioner Fisher, my memory's a little fuzzy on it, but nevertheless, it was discussed and then authorized by this board. "John Rice, please prepare a legal memorandum on that." That way, it's done in public, the public's aware that that's going on. Here, we have something very different. People meeting behind closed doors with John Rice and talking about, and formulating, and drafting policy, a resolution.
And I'd even add that if it was a consensus, it would have had to have been four, which would have made it a public meeting without, that was unpublished, and it was, and that would be improper.
Yeah, I just want to add into this, I mean, before these conspiracy theories get too far, there have been a set of draft rules for this board, in front of us, for our consideration, drafted by staff for two years. And in our monthly, our weekly report from Bob, we get almost every week, "Could you please look at the draft rules?" And that emanated from staff. So this is nothing new, this is something that was put in front of us by staff two to three years ago, drafting rules for the way this board conducts itself. And, you know, this is a part of the process. It's been percolating for many years.
Yeah, but Elaine, that's not right. We have draft rules of conduct, and we, and I extensively marked those up, and we talked about what, how the procedures would be. This was a separate ordinance. That's not what this is.
And not only that, I must say, Commissioner Schaefer, that your assertions that this is somehow a staff idea, James Higgins contradicts that in this very same article. This is what Vice President Jim Higgins says to the press. "Vice President James Higgins says a consensus of the commissioners believes the changes are needed, and asked Township Solicitor John Rice to come up with the draft." So that would be the commissioners going at John Rice and not the staff proposing. But let me continue. Quote, "Well, I think there's a general feeling among the board members that our meetings are going too long," said Higgins. Quote, "We have some people from the audience that speak excessively long, and thirdly, we feel like we need an objective standard for proper decorum, rather than simply have the chair decide what is out of bounds." That doesn't sound very much like the staff coming up with something and then the board reviewing it. This appears, yet again, like commissioners individually coming up with something and then tasking a township official, John Rice, to draft it. And whether you did it in the form of a quorum in executive session, which is a Sunshine Act violation, or whether you did it individually, we'll soon find out. I don't hear anybody right now saying that this was my idea, that I was the one who went to John Rice, but we'll find out who that is. This information has a tendency to get out, particularly if people want to try to exonerate themselves from whatever process this was. But it's very disconcerting to read about this. This public has the right to believe that proposed resolutions, ordinances, and laws, and policy are initiated in public meetings. That's the point. They get brought up during public meetings. As a result, the public has a right to comment, press has the opportunity, should they choose to write about it, and we go from there, okay? If you had brought it up in a public meeting saying, "Look, for example, Dan Sherry, what a blowhard, he goes on and on and on in public meetings, we need to create a uniform standard, let's task John Rice with evaluating what types of procedures we should put into effect." You do that via new business at a meeting if you don't want to put it on an agenda, and the board votes on it, and we go from there. This is different. And if it turns out that someone individually did this, then you do have a major ethics concern in terms of directing a township official, which is who John Rice is. So, that, I guess we'll be getting more information on that as the weeks go on, but it's very disconcerting to read about that. And I can tell you, just from my own personal vantage point, that I will be very curious as to who the first person was who went to John Rice and asked him to draft something regarding a proposed resolution. That person will be my focus. Lastly, just because we have people in the audience that may have been present at the meeting when this occurred. For those that don't know, this Thursday will be a meeting of the Radnor Ethics Board at 7:00 PM in the roll call room in the Township Building, which is not this building. As people will know, when the Ethics Board has public meetings, at least in the past year, they've had them in this room, where there are television cameras. But about a week and a half ago, John Rice informed me that this Ethics Board meeting pertaining to John Nagel's comment towards me, "Somebody shoot you," reported in the press, that will be in the roll call room where no cameras are installed. However, John Rice has permitted me to bring a videographer, so there will be video cameras filming the event. Also, approximately 40 minutes ago, I received an email, which was correspondence from Mr. Nagel's attorney, Neil Morris. In that email, Neil Morris makes certain claims, including a contention that I filed a criminal complaint against John Nagel that was ignored. Incredibly false claim, that will be dealt with in due course. However, what is also very interesting in Mr. Morris's letter is his assertion that John Nagel did not say "somebody shoot you" to me. Instead, Mr. Morris is claiming that John Nagel said "somebody shoot me," meaning John Nagel said that about himself. "Somebody shoot me," notwithstanding the fact that John Nagel, of course, offered a public apology to me. It may, as a result, and I tell members of the board this, may be necessary, to the extent this is going to be disputed, which again, makes John Rice's involvement as a potential witness for the Ethics Board as counsel to be very problematic, that I may need to go to certain people on this board and get affidavits as to what, if anything, you remember regarding John Nagel's outburst. I tell you all that because the assertion being raised for the first time, apparently, less than 48 hours until the Ethic Board hearing, that John Nagel was saying "somebody shoot me" rather than "somebody shoot you," despite the fact that was overheard by, among other people, a reporter, is a rather significant claim. So, to the extent you all have some availability potentially to talk, with the exception of you, Commissioner Schaefer, because, as you publicly stated, you didn't even hear what John Nagel said, and you, Commissioner Spengler, because you are actually on the Ethics Board, and it would be completely inappropriate for me to speak to you directly about this. Just be advised that I may be doing so in the next couple of days. Thank you for your time and your candor.
My name is Christina Peroni, and I live in Wayne. Following up on what Mr. Sherry was talking about, I was on the Charter Review Committee, and one of the items that was discussed and was really important is this 2.09H, which basically says that nobody, no individual commissioner can go to any, and act individually, go to any township official or employee. So, when you say, Mr. Curly, that so-and-so's leaves weren't picked up or whatever, in my humble opinion, I think that's completely fine. You're going right to Mr. Zankowski, he's the one who then delegates it to staff. But if you went to, let's say, you know, the chief of police and said, you know, "This neighbor's really being annoying, I think you should go and check him out and see what's going on," that would be inappropriate. You are allowed to go to the manager, you are not allowed to go to staff. The obvious reason for that is multi-layered. One, this man will never get anything done if you have seven bosses going around. I mean, anybody who's been a boss knows that they can't have seven other bosses directing their staff. That's the practical reason. The conspiracy reason is that inappropriate things can happen. You can go and ask for inappropriate things, maybe just trying to support your constituent, but still inappropriate. Like I will say, this exact example of what it looks like Mr. Higgins did, which was, went to the solicitor, and I find it curious that he's not here, considering he's here every single meeting, I don't know why he's not here, to limit public comment. I mean, it is the exact thing that the Charter is fighting against. Yes, it's tough having people like us come up and question what you're doing, because I know all of you believe you're doing the right thing, and for good reason, and you're just doing a public service. But there are rules in place to protect public service and to protect the people. And this is a gross violation of both that. One, it's an ethics violation because you're violating the Charter. The Charter tells you you cannot direct staff. Whatever Mr. Rice is charging us to design this whole resolution, all of that should be part of the conversation. You know, how much money are we wasting and throwing out? Because let's say, hopefully, there would be a majority of people who don't want to limit public conversation, who don't want to. One of the provisions in that resolution was, unless all seven commissioners agree, no person can speak longer than five minutes. You know, clearly, the goal is to limit discussion and conversation, which is what is in the Charter. The Charter says there should be dialogue. So I would like to know, what is the next step with this?
Christina, number one is, we're not allowed to direct staff.
Right. And what, so Mr. Rice is staff?
Mr. Rice is not staff, no.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We have the township manager, doesn't say in the home charter, but it shows, we go to township manager.
That's fine.
We don't direct staff, we go to township manager. The solicitor works for the commissioners. He works for the commissioners. He's a personal, we appoint him, he works for us, he's not staff under the manager, okay? The manager can't direct the solicitor, okay, to do something major unless they have the approval of the commissioners. So we will find out, you know, exactly, you know, what happened, but I've been in this business a long time. Many times, I've asked the solicitor to look up something for me, or to draft a resolution that I could circulate before the commissioners and all that. I don't see anything wrong with that, but we'll find out exactly what it is and go forward. This isn't a major crisis, this is something that a, you know, solicitor works for us, and we can ask his opinion, we can ask us to draft something, we don't have to have, in my mind, the approval of all the commissioners, to ask him to draft something, it's not extra pay or anything. Commissioners call him all the time and ask him questions, and ask him this, to help formulate our opinions that we can take to fellow commissioners, or we can take to commissioners' meetings. So he's not staff, he's working for us. If he has a problem with any commissioner, ask him to do something that he doesn't think he should do, then he can discuss it with the whole board, okay? Thank you.
So, thank you for those comments. I totally refute what you're saying. The first sentence says, "It is the intent of this Charter that the board act as a body in relation to all township matters." This is a policy. This is, it's not, oh, could you interpret this?
It's not public, I could think of, I could think of 10 or 15 things that aren't public that I'm thinking about, I might be talking with the solicitor about it or something.
But why waste money and time if you don't have four people who agree with you? This is policy.
Because I have to formulate it and get my act together, see if I'm right, see if I agree, see if there's any problems with it, then I, you know, so that's what the solicitor's there for. He's there to help the commissioners move forward. When we do public policy, we do it at public meetings, we take public votes, we can't do anything behind closed doors. But we can certainly talk to people and have them formulate things so we can get ideas.
But why would you do that if you don't know if you have a majority of the board that's interested in this? Each of you should be standing up saying, "Yes, I want to limit public conversation."
No, no, we cannot.
And therefore, please direct staff.
We cannot, we cannot come up with ideas and say, you know, "Oh, I have four votes." So, no, you're trying to generate a majority of the board, so therefore, you come up with the ideas and the thoughts and...
Okay, and then your job is at new business, or put it on the agenda, say, "I'd like to talk about public policy regarding..."
That's right, and that will happen at the appropriate time.
But not after it's already drafted. You have a resolution that I read, that's already been drafted, that says things like seven people have to agree before people are allowed to talk more.
But I came up with the idea for the 2.5% transfer tax, I had that ordinance drafted before I discussed it with the other commissioners.
Well, maybe we should rethink that.
I was surprised when I came into the meeting that the Republicans voted for it.
Okay.
But I didn't go around and say, "Hey, are you in favor of raising the real estate transfer tax 1/4% to fund open space?" No. I went to the manager, and I went to the solicitor, and I said, "Can I do this?" I got together with the finance director, they said, "Yes, you can do this." I just go, "Well, draft something that I can take to my fellow commissioners." They drafted it, I brought it into a commissioners' meeting, and I was shocked when it passed. So, you know, you're getting all upset about, you know, something that isn't before the public.
Well, obviously, that was problematic, and we should avoid that type of activity. I think that that makes the point.
Right. And just like when Mr. Nagel went and was working with Villanova to craft a new zoning law, and then you put it before and say, "Oh, here are the zoning rules," and you're just going and negotiating the zoning rules instead of, "Shall we decide new zoning for different places?" The point is, policy, you, I know you don't think you're doing anything wrong, and I know you're just trying to be efficient, but that's not the way the rules read, and you need...
I disagree, and we'll find out.
And how will we find out? Can you put this on the agenda so that we talk about it at next meeting, so that we hear from Mr. Rice? Or will you do that?
Sure, I will, I will, yeah.
Will you agree to put it on the, I appreciate it. So it'll be on the agenda, and we'll talk about it.
Well, we're going to have the resolution on the agenda next time.
I know. You really want that, don't you, Mr. Higgins? What a shame, what a shame that one of your goals is to limit public conversation.
I'm not going to engage you personally.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Christina, we got it.
I do want to say that I don't agree with your interpretation of us putting a request to the solicitor as being a violation of our Charter. I mean, we have to be able to ask questions to the solicitor. And again, I ask questions to the solicitor all the time. I ask him to, I tell him the information I'm missing, I ask him to get me information. Sometimes he does, and sometimes he doesn't, but that is all toward being able to make an informed decision here, and I think it's... I don't see, I don't see what you just identified, looking at the same rules. I see it as appropriate for us to ask questions to the solicitor, and the solicitor to respond to them.
Asking questions is one thing, asking for an ordinance to be crafted is another. But it does say here, but it does, and it sounds like you just ask questions, asking to draft...
Well, I'm going to be fair to, since you're criticizing, I'm going to give you, I mean, I ask him for information, and sometimes he says, "I can't get that, I don't have that information, I have to get it." And I say, "That would be great, could you get it for me?" And he does that. I don't view that as directing the solicitor. I view that as getting information, and I view it as an essential element of this job. And if we determine as an entity that that's directing the solicitor, then let's have that discussion out.
Okay, it's perfect.
Because I am not, I think it would be quite a mistake if you tried to stop the seven of us from asking questions to the solicitor and forcing us to only be able to ask questions to him at a public meeting. I think that would be a mistake.
But that is part of what is designed, and I'll just make this last point. The second sentence says, "No commissioner acting individually shall seek publicly or privately to direct the acts of a township official or employees." So clearly, the solicitor is a township official. So that's what the rules say. If you want to change the rules, change the rules. But these are the rules.
So, Don, I just want to counter what you just said. Asking the solicitor for a legal position, something of that matter, that's not the same as directing, you're seeking legal advice. But asking the solicitor to draft an ordinance or a resolution...
Yes, yes.
I have never done that.
Very good, nor have I.
Never done that in seven years on this bench.
Yes, and I'll accept.
And when I tried to get an ordinance done, it required a vote of the board.
Yes, I would accept that there is a threshold difference there that involves action on the part of the solicitor, but using Christina's, this is how I interpret what you say. We can't ask him anything, because the moment he has to open up his law book to get us an answer, he's doing work, and we're not allowed to ask him to do work.
But, you know, on the other side, if I have an issue that I'm interested in, okay, and I'm formulating my opinion, I'm talking to staff, I'm talking to township manager, and we haven't really had a thought. manager, and we haven't really made a thought, and I ask the solicitor, says, can you put that in the form of an ordinance, you know, that you've done other places, so I have something to take to the, to my board and say, this is something I'd like you to consider? I don't see anything wrong with that, Don.
Okay, but see, Mr. Spengler, if, let's say, each time somebody said, hey, could you try this, hey, could you try this, hey, could you try this, we were being charged $1,000.
No, we're not charged, he's, he's on salary.
Just, just let's...
No, 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 let's, let's, all facts. There's no extra money involved.
He's right, there's no money.
There's zero extra money.
Zero extra money.
Okay, so we'll do a right notice, see that that's true.
And he can refuse to do that, and he can say to us, Bill, I would feel more comfortable if, you know, you said at a public meeting, you asked for that at a public meeting, okay? But he's our solicitor, we have this privilege, okay, and so, you know, we use him the best of our abilities, and we can serve our constituents. That's all we're doing.
And I agree with what Mr. Curly is saying, and what Mr. Fisher is saying, and Mr. Booker, that there's a different threshold between, is this a violation, this zoning rule or whatever, and draft an ordinance.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't see that, but I'm going to ask this, I'm going to find out.
And that's part of the problem. So I think there's an old-school way of, of working and a new school.
At the next, at the next meeting, we'll tell you what our thinking is.
And you'll put it on the agenda for discussion. I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, it's not going to be on the agenda for discussion. I will, I will publicly state and have the solicitor tell us.
So maybe another commissioner wants to say that it should be on the agenda for a conversation, because don't you want to know what it is, or you just want Mr. Spengler to come and tell us?
It'll be on the agenda for introduction as an ordinance.
Well, no, no, the issue...
You're not allowed to do that.
It'll be on the agenda for introduction as an ordinance.
You can't, because you guys haven't voted to put that on the agenda.
You can't tell us what we can do or cannot do.
Yeah.
Okay? You cannot tell us that.
Yeah, the point, the point raised is valid.
No.
And we should not have, we should not have four commissioners.
Christine.
We should not have four commissioners.
You are the one that said any commissioner could put anything on the agenda, all they got to do is tell the township manager, that's your rule, that's your rule.
No, but I didn't, I didn't say that you can create an ordinance that isn't approved by your, um, commissioners.
Right, as a matter of fact.
Don't twist it.
But you, but you did say that any commissioner could put anything on the agenda.
Yes, but put it on the agenda.
Okay, fine.
Put it on the agenda to have a conversation.
And it can be shot down.
Christine, we got it, and I will have, I will talk to John Rice at the next meeting, will tell you whether a commissioner can direct him to do an ordinance or not.
I appreciate that.
For informational purposes.
And I look forward to seeing what commissioners want to put on their name approving, limiting conversation. So that is something for, ready to think about for next week.
What we need on the agenda, Mr. Zinkowski, is a discussion of this issue. Or, we need to have some resolution, perhaps it should be an executive, but the issue that we cannot have four commissioners or a single commissioner directing the solicitor at a whim to draft ordinances to be introduced without any conversation or discussion in public amongst the board of commissioners. It's flat illegal, and if that is the rule...
An ordinance can only be introduced if it gets, if it gets a majority vote.
No, that's, what are you talking about? That doesn't even make any sense.
You have to introduce it in a public meeting with a motion and a...
You have to, you have to discuss and get approval and a public vote to even permit the ordinance to be drafted.
No, I don't agree with that, but that's fine, that's fine. All right, any other public comment? Our next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Does any commissioner have a problem with any of these issues?
Yes.
Which ones?
Would like to pull letter E, letter G, please.
Anyone else? Any public? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda with E and G off?
So moved, second.
All right, Elaine moved and John seconded. Any public comment on these items? Commissioner comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero. Now we have a resolution, entered agreement with consolidated energy for the purchase of green power. Can I have a motion to approve that?
I have a motion to approve that.
Second? Do I have a second? Discussion, commissioner discussion?
Yeah, go ahead, Don, go first.
I have one quick question. I read this to indicate that you thought there would be a $30,000 savings bill, but, savings, Bill being your name. But is that, is that applied? Are we then buying 100% of our energy from wind at this point? Or a portion of our energy?
100% of the energy that we buy for the kilowatt hours would be from wind.
So here's my, here's my concern, that that $30,000 is not actually, that's $30,000 relative to what we were paying, but rates have come down considerably, such that if we weren't getting 100% from wind, we would be, instead of saving 30,000, we would be saving 90,000 or something like that. So I don't, I didn't take this, and I didn't, I don't feel like we have enough information to determine, we've got the wrong benchmark. The benchmark is our old contract. The benchmark should be, how much would we save? Or in my, my opinion is, it's my understanding, we're going to pay more to have wind.
That's my understanding as well.
We might choose to do that. I'm not, I'm not closing that out, but I want to know how much that savings is or that cost is. I'm under the impression that at the amount that we use, that could be something on the order of $60,000 a year. And my sense is that that's probably not prudent for us, but we should know that when we make the decision. So I don't know if others feel differently, it sounds like Rich does.
I, I agree with that completely, and as a matter of fact, at Parks and Rec, we heard that this will cost more money to have green energy. I, I don't think that the taxpayers want to pay more in taxes or, or less in other areas of the township for, for electricity than they need to. So I, I, again, I agree with Don. My understanding is that this is an increase in what the cost would be but for the purchase of green energy. And I think that that's the wrong way to go for the township, that why would we spend more on energy than we have to, to run the township and to serve the taxpayers efficiently?
Well, I, I mean, the way I read it, and obviously, this is subject to interpretation since we read it differently, is that the price, that the comparison price is what we would get at today's PICO prices, today, going out to the market today, not what we paid on our last contract.
Let's hear what he says.
So...
Yeah, understand that the, and I actually debated whether or not to even include a comment on the price point, and this was why. The, the genesis behind this resolution and this project was not financially driven. It was a, a, one of the action items presented as part of the greenhouse gas reduction action plan that the Board of Commissioners adopted and assigned to the EAC and township staff to work together to address the items on that, that action plan. And I've got it quoted in the purpose and explanation portion of the proposed legislation summary, that the, the action plan says that the biggest single step that Radnor Township can take to reduce the carbon emissions from its electricity use is to exercise its opportunity to purchase electricity generated from renewable, carbon-free sources. So that was the primary focus of getting, going out and seeking a quote from Constellation for 100% renewable energy. To the extent the price that we fix for a 24-month period, if this resolution's adopted, is a financial gain or loss, is going to depend on where the prices go over that period of time. What we will know is that the price we pay for that energy is fixed, and it satisfies the, the action item in the, the plan that was adopted by the board. So that's what's being presented here tonight.
But that, that $30,000 differential, you came up with that by using whatever the price is today.
The price to compare that's on the PICO bills that we get today.
Yes, but that wouldn't be the price that we would, so what I think we should do is go out to bid with two comparable bids, one with conventional, one with wind, and one with probably some kind of blend, and then we make a decision regarding how much we're willing to, or first, we're going to make a decision if we are willing to subsidize, and second, by how much. Based upon what I, where I understand prices to be, and the amount of energy that, you know, I think we use based, I'm just looking, you know, I looked at the, you know, the budgets and things of that sort. My sense is that we're paying something on the order of $60,000 more for wind than we would be for, if we got, if we had a conventional.
Right, so the...
And that, I'm not closing the door on that, but we need to know that before we make a decision. Right now, we've got, we've got the wrong baseline. The baseline is the old energy contract. The baseline should be the existing under-energy contract using non-wind as an alternative.
Consequently, we need an apples-to-apples so we could have a wind fixed price for two years and a conventional fixed price for two years, and then we can compare, not, not what we're paying today. So I agree with, completely.
And, and that's fine, we can certainly do that, but understand that that is not, not what is recommended in the greenhouse reduction action plan.
But I, I don't agree with that statement either. I mean, I read that, that we can reduce our, we can reduce our, our footprint, it doesn't mean we have to purchase 100% of our power from...
Well, in, in the actual checklist in that report was...
Does it say 100%?
The purchase of 100% renewable energy. So, but we could, we could go out, we could get the pricing and come back.
This board did vote on that, and it passed to, to, to accept, adopt that policy. Bill, how often does PICO, does PICO come to us every year for a new contract, or is it something that we have to drive?
We have to drive, it's, we're, it's up to us.
And I'm seeing the, the kilowatt rate is about 6.7 cents per kilowatt, and that seems to be cheaper than what residents, residential electric costs. So this is a wholesale rate that we're getting quoted, regardless of who you're getting it from, it's a wholesale rate, not to be compared to what a homeowner would get. So I, I mean, I, Don, I support what you're saying, we should understand, we could, if anything, it makes a bold or political statement to say, yeah, we're willing to pay a little bit more to reduce our greenhouse emissions.
So, John, I'm, yeah, I want to make this, I'm not, maybe I want to make that statement. I just want to know how much this statement costs.
I'm not arguing with you.
Looking at 67, I mean, quite frankly...
Bill, do you have the number, do you have a number from, from, Bill, do you have any competitive numbers now that you would be able to share with us, or do we want to wait until the next meeting to just make the...
No, if this is, if this is the, the direction of the board, what we'll do is, we'll go back and we'll, we'll ask for updated pricing, because the pricing changes every day. Or we could lock in, we could ask to lock in and give us a week to decide, but the, the shorter window that we ask to lock in, the more accurate the pricing's going to end up being. So what I would recommend, if this is the direction the board wants to go in, is that we, we hold this off tonight, we go back and we get the apples-to-apples comparison, and we bring it back to the board.
That would satisfy my...
Because I think also too, is if you want apple, now, you're looking at taking wind as a competition, or you're looking going apples-to-apples to PICO? Because I think you're going to want to look apples-to-apples to PICO, right? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, we were...
I'm pretty confident you're going to see a much lower number if you go on to the market.
It's not PICO, it's, it's you go to the market and you get, you can go to PICO, you can go whoever you want.
But you're not going to go with wind, you're going to look at other opportunities of how electricity, you know, generation costs and what those are, which I'm sure you're going to see much lower costs, but you're not going to be into the green type of energy. That's what you're going to see. And I'm sure you're going to see much more competitive rates.
Yes, that's, that's what I want to know is, is how much are we subsidizing the cost of our power? And I might choose to do it, but I, I can't make that decision unless I know how much we are subsidizing.
Okay.
Because I'm under the impression, the impression that to purchase wind power, we would have to, we would essentially be subsidizing the, the purchase.
Okay.
By subsidizing, I mean, paying more than, than the market would otherwise charge us.
I agree, I think it's reasonable.
Just as a matter of history, Radnor did purchase wind power for quite a few years. We were leaders amongst towns doing that.
It was what, 25%, 10%?
A lot more than that.
Really?
But when we got into the financial difficulties back in 2008, '09, we stopped doing that. To me, this is a matter of, Radnor is a leader-type community. We establish positive moves. The, going forth with this is a positive thing for the environment, it's in our, the action plan that we all approved. It would be nice to know, I agree with Don, it would be nice to know the real numbers, but I'm still voting for it even if it's $60,000, Don.
Yeah, well, let's get the numbers, and then we'll do it. You withdraw your motion, Elaine?
Uh, yes.
Your motion second's withdrawn, withdrawn, so come back, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, give us the price, and we'll vote on it based on how much it's costing the taxpayers.
We, we're probably going to end up into one of the March meetings.
Okay, fine.
Do you, do you have that price for, for the wind locked, or is that volatile every day? I mean, is that a stable...
It could be rebid every day. So this, the number that's on here today is good for today, tomorrow...
So when you, when you go and get a bid for fossil fuel, you will also re, get this price again for the wind at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think in the list of options, we should have one that satisfies what the EAC has been tasked to do, so...
Yes.
Okay.
All right, can I have a motion to approve Resolution G? A motion, please.
I'll, I'll move to approve it.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner discussion?
Yeah, this is related to item 201501, how about that? So that's our first ordinance. But this is authorizing Cozen or Connor to serve as bond counsel for the, the upcoming refunding transaction that we're going to talk about under committee reports. I just wanted to find out about, last time we, we had used Saul Ewing, right? And, no?
No, a, a number of years ago, we did a, an RFP for bond counsel, and through that process, selected Cozen, and they've been on board as bond counsel since, I want to say, back to 2010, the refunding that we did in 2010, and they've been with us since.
Okay.
And it's been...
So this wasn't a rebid, this, we didn't rebid this?
No, this is, in the interest of full disclosure...
Which is always good.
...identifying who the bond counsel is and how much we're going to pay for their, their services on this transaction.
So, who was it, wasn't it Suzanne last time, Suzanne?
And Suzanne is the, is the primary person on this, this deal again. She was not able to make it tonight, so John Lichtenstein's here from Cozen to answer any questions when we get to that item.
Okay, because I just, I just was, I guess I remember Suzanne when she was at, at Saul. All right, that was my mistake. All right, for, for, and also, if you could, on the last bond issue, one of the things we talked about was the, I wanted to make sure we had the opinion that was electoral debt, was that, was that included with the bond package? Is that part of the opinion? If, if you could just remind her of that and send me whatever we had on that. I wanted to make sure that there was some opinion from Cozen that was electoral debt for the last bond issue. I wanted to make sure that there was some opinion from Cozen that was electoral debt for the last bond issue.
You can't speak for the audience, but okay. You can't speak for the audience. You cannot speak for the audience. We'll talk about it in the next item, okay? Any other commissioner comment on this item? Any public comment? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, pass it seven to zero. Committee reports, we have ordinance for the adoption.
I'll move the adoption of ordinance 2015-01. This is authorizing the incurrence of electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds, series 2015, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,775,000 for the purpose of providing funds to currently refund all or portion of the township outstanding general obligation bonds from 2009 and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner, discussion?
Just as a point of information, 2009 series is the open space from the first, you know, the 10 million we did many years ago, Bill?
Yep.
So that was electoral debt also.
So I guess, Mr. Wolf, are you going to, are anybody going to talk? This is a current refunding, right? So there's no, there'll be no escrow. And when is, when is 2009 mature?
2026.
26. And so, and what's the premium on the 2009 bonds? Or is there a premium at all for, for the call?
Can't speak for the audience.
It's, it's callable par, he said. All right, so. And I guess we couldn't have done, because we talked about this at the end of last year, we couldn't have done it because these had already been advanced refunded? Or was there something, or we didn't want to, or? Why didn't we do this with the other bond issue? I've forgotten.
It's part of my presentation. Should we, should we go in order? Do you want me to just answer?
We should.
No, we're not going to do presentation. We're going to prove it. Let's go. We're not going to, we're not going to spend hours, we're not going to spend hours on this.
This is the second part of a two-part deal. The first part was the new money part at Christmas. These bonds, the 2009, cannot be called until May 1st. This is a current refunding. We'll be settling in March, a mere six weeks before the call date. So it's a current refunding, no escrow. It's actually considered a gross funding. We're not even going to try and calculate the interest earned. It's just going to accrue to you and we're not buying slugs or anything like that. It's a very simple plain vanilla refunding.
So we, we didn't want to do it at, at last year because it was too, too far in advance?
No, no. Could not do it, having used up your one advance refunding-
For this year.
For this series. Before, we had to wait-
Okay.
Until this year.
Any public questions? All those in favor say aye.
Hold on, Bob's not done yet. Okay, hold on. So now how do we size this? This is only to take, to refund, to currently refund the 2009 bonds. There's no other money being borrowed for this?
That is, that is correct.
And so my question, all right, now this is, this is very kind of, this is just throwing the idea out there and thinking aloud, so to speak. But look, we have historically low interest rates, right? This is a small bond issue and it's going to be, it's going to be savings, right? It's going to reduce, the way you calculate it, it will actually reduce the budget, right? So that's a good thing. However, we also have several items that I've repeatedly heard are, are manager that we want to get. Like specifically when we talk about development in the township, we keep talking about, well, we want to have off-site improvements. And we talk about, well, we should give special breaks to different developers and then they'll do off-site improvements. So what I would like to do is to uncouple any type of development from any goodies that could be given to the township. So what I would say is why don't we, you know, I, one of the things we talked about, Bob, we wanted to have a, an adaptive traffic control system. And I think that would have a useful life of, of 10 years or so, right? Probably something like that. I think that that project like that would be a perfect thing to put into this bond issue, right? And that way we would not end up being beholden to any developer, right? And hope, and letting them put something through so we could get something. In other words, we don't have to trade. What, right now we have historically low bond issue, bond pricing and, and interest rates. So I would say, why don't we look at putting some, some capital expenditures for longer lives items-
Wait.
Into, into this, into this bond issue so that we can, we can, we can uncouple.
Rich, I attended the Carfac meeting-
You are suggesting that we can take out more debt right now?
I, I'm suggesting that at the lowest historic bond rates, maybe it's a good time to build in-
To take out more debt.
To put, take out more debt and to borrow, borrow more money for the projects that we feel are necessary for the township that are longer live, that are longer live. Money is as cheap as it's going to be and historically is as cheap as it's ever been. And I think that as, in, in all things considered, that now is the best time to think about doing something like that.
Make a motion, let's vote on it.
Uh, Rich, hang on. I just want to make sure I understand his position.
Before you, I attended the Carfac meeting three weeks ago in which all of the options were discussed. And I put your option on the table because you had mentioned it before. And Carfac did not agree with that position. So they have advised us not to do that.
Well, okay, so I just want to, I just want to clarify.
You're suggesting that we use this re-issuance that has an 11-year term to, and increase the amount of the funding to help cover 10-year life, 11-year life asset work?
20, or 20-year, or 20-year assets. It could be any, any long-term assets.
Well, I wouldn't do that. If it's, if it's a 20-year life asset, what I would do is a 20-year bond. But what I would suggest is if you believe, and I do believe that we have a lot of capital-intensive projects coming to this township in the next two years, I would suggest that this board revisit bond financing. And we should look at floating a new bond with a 30-year life at a very low interest rate to help cover the cost of long-life capital projects. We're talking about 100 miles of silver pipe in the street that are 100 years old. We're talking about streets that aren't getting repaved on a schedule that I think is adequate. We're talking about bridges in the township that are falling down, right? So these are all real issues, but I don't think we should add-
We fixed the one.
I don't like the fact that this is an 11-year term. I don't want to take a 30-year cost asset and stick it on an 11-year loan.
Well, why not? I mean, you can. That's, you're just, you're paying for it early.
Because I think it's only fair that if you're going to do a long-life asset, that you let residents that come to this township 25 years from now help pay for that.
All right, Rich, make a motion and we'll vote on it rather than discuss it for the next hour.
Let's kind of, let's kind of unpack, let's unpack that.
Now, make a motion. Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before a motion's made, just with regard to ordinance 25-01, it is written and was noticed pursuant to the, the Unit Debt Act purely for a refunding. If the board makes, passes a motion to add new money to it, we're, we're scrapping this and starting over.
We're just making a motion.
So I did, well, I wanted to make sure that we were aware of that.
Well, we could, we could do that. We just, we just rewrite the paper, you know, we just rewrite this.
Fine, make your motion. Make a motion.
They can do that. They can do, don't, don't, no, let's unpack the whole thing here.
No, we're not going to pack it, Rich.
Listen, what I'm suggesting is let's think about a million dollars, which would have, what would the debt service for 11 years? A million dollars saves even, it's $100,000, 3%. So that would be $103,000 per year if you're paying over 10 years, roughly. Yeah, that's probably a little less.
And a lot less over 20 years.
Yeah, right. So the point is, is that when you spread that out over the household, it's pennies. And it's, the money is so cheap right now that it's probably the right time to do that. And, and it's beneficial, not only because we, we get the stuff that we want to do and we, and we put it the cost where it should be, but then it also allows us to not be beholden to, to any developer. And I think that what we've seen in the Ardrossen development and Villanova development is that we end up beholden to developers just to try to get some cash. And I, I don't want to be in that position. I want us to spend the money that we need to for the public works and public projects that are appropriate and, and to, and to make, and to have developers follow the rules and pay the fees that they're supposed to without special, special deals that are meant to sweeten the pot for the township and, and to raise revenue for the township. I, I disagree with raising revenue for the township. So that's, that's the light. Even if it's a thousand, even if it's a million dollars.
As Mr. White pointed out though, the ad that ran on Saturday, which had to be redone because of the canceled meeting, does not contemplate any new money in that ad.
If I may, Rich, it sounds to me like you're seconding John's motion to have a capital bond.
No.
No.
No, I'm not. I'm, what my, what I'm considering would be to, and I wish we, I would have known that. I wish that that would have been, you know,
Rich, we-
We didn't know, I didn't know. When we canceled this meeting, I had no idea that-
Rich, if your motion passes, we can change everything. Make a motion then. Let's make a motion. What you want to do. Make a motion.
Well, let's, let me, let me think about that. So right now, what do we have? You did, you did your Tefr notice?
It's not called that, but we have advertised under the local government unit debt act for a parameters ordinance to be ordered on tonight.
And there's no, no new money in the parameters? We can't read that in?
No. It was actually discussed at Carfac and determined that that-
Why did Carfac not want to do anything?
Well, if we go back to the priorities that were discussed with the board members and Carfac, I think at the October or November Carfac meeting, one of the items was to do a comprehensive review of the capital plan. So it seemed a little premature to have new money built into this refunding when they haven't had a chance to do the comprehensive review yet. So there was some hesitation, jumping out and borrowing new money on a plan that they haven't reviewed. So they, they, they weren't in a position to make a recommendation on issuing new money.
All right. Well, that makes sense. And that's not their job. Our job as commissioners is to think about these things. And I agree with Carfac. I would not want to spend, I would put, oh, let's spend, just borrow $20 million and we'll figure out what that is. That's bad policy. However, manager, township manager, Mr. Zankowski, has repeatedly talked about this, the traffic, the traffic system for Lancaster Avenue. It was a, was a major point of contention with the Villanova development. And Villanova is only paying $175,000 out of what we thought was a million-dollar-plus project. Consequently, in a parameters resolution, had I known about it, I would have said, well, why don't we at least, we should throw in the ability to have some new money in there for things like, like this, this item or other projects that would be a pittance in, in overall debt service when spread out over the tax base.
I don't want to have a debate, but in order to do what you said, we would have had to know the project, the cost, the economic life. All those things have to be known and bond council's fairly strict about wanting to know those things.
Understood. And we should have done that instead of talking about other, having the-
Rich, we are-
Other ordinances drafted by our solicitor. This is what we should have been doing.
Rich, we already set that in motion. We are doing that. Carfac will come back to us with the capital project.
Interest rates could go away from us.
I do have one, I do have one new piece of information though. And that is that, as I said, this was the second step of a two-step process. We'll be ready to sell bonds as soon as tomorrow morning. And we think the rates will be extremely favorable. There is though, a deal, there is a transaction coming in September of this year. Another refunding is going to be available. If rates are still good, it'll be a refunding of the series of 2010. So if you don't issue bonds for new capital projects before September, there will be an opportunity to do a multi-purpose issue in September. It's a very small refunding and you could add on whatever new money the board so directs.
Right. So-
So put that on your long range.
What will the interest rates be in September?
I just said he doesn't know.
Yeah, that's my point.
Is there any public comments? Any public comment?
Uh, Bill, I have a comment. Just briefly, I could not disagree more. I don't think it would be right for us to consider taking out debt and having taxpayer fund infrastructure needs that are caused by, directly by a development. To the extent we can have the developers and the people profiting from the developments cover those expenses, that's where we should be getting the money, not from our taxpayers. So I'm completely against that type of expense being funded through debt. But what I wanted to say-
Elaine, can I just say ditto on that? Thank you. No, I just want a second.
But that's not what we do though. We give special deals for cash.
The other comment that I wanted to make was, I wanted to recognize Carfac on this issue. Every time we have one of these discussions, we rely heavily upon them. But for this one in particular, they gave a lot of thorough and thoughtful discussion and examination to this issue. They went through all scenarios of how we would take the interest savings, you know, whether we would take them upfront. They ran all the scenarios. They did an enormous amount of work to make this recommendation to us that we spread out our savings evenly, evenly over the term. And, you know, they don't, they, they don't come and give a big recommendation. They don't get a lot of, of recognition. And I want everyone to, to understand the amount of thought and examination that went into this by a group of really talented and hard-working and generous residents who, who we've, we have been relying upon very heavily over the last five years since they've been in place. And they have given us really sound advice. So I just want to put that out there that, you know, this is not a 10-minute discussion and okay, let's go ahead and do the bond. There has been a lot of thought put into the recommendation for having this move forward.
What is, what is Mr. Wolf at betting and scat-a-good, scat-a-good doing? He's, he's the one that's getting paid. I think that-
I'll call the question.
Think that he did a lot, he did that work.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rich, how are you voting? I didn't notice you voting.
All right. Now, now that the vote is over, I'd like-
Passes seven to zero.
I'd like to just point out that the estimated savings here are $376,000 to $411,000. The, based on interest rates of 7.485 to 7.542. And-
That's higher.
That, okay. The, the ultimate benefit to us is that our open space fund will be, funds will be made available in that to pay off debt service, which would then keep our millage rate for 2016 for Ardrossen down lower than it otherwise would be.
Now that you've voted, let me just give you a couple of comments. I'm going to ask you to look at this thin report after the meeting is over because it has a lot of interesting information, including your Moody's bond rating, which was good one more time. It was excellent. If we get the interest rates tomorrow morning, that we hope, the savings will be more than $300,000 present value. It'll be more than 6.5% as a percent of refunded principal. I mention that because this board has always had in its mind that 3% would be the minimum level target to shoot for in the refunding. And so without much risk, I think I can tell you that you're going to double that minimum target of 3%. It's going to be more than 6%. And what it's going to do, because savings, we looked at it a lot of different ways and Carfac helped, the savings is going to be about $30,000 a year. We're not extending the debt any longer than the original 2026 maturity. And what Mr. Higgins was referring to is that debt service is coming down by 30,000. That's 30,000 less of a drag on the revenue stream from the transfer tax, which is helpful since we have the new bond issue to try and pay for as well.
Okay.
So it's, it's good news. The last time I was here, you told me to come back with good rates. We're 15 to 20 basis points, .15 to .20 better than we were at Christmas. So I did what you said. Or I'm about to do what you asked, is a better way to put it.
And so this is a negotiated deal. So what's, what's the underwriter discount on this one?
$5.
$5? Now, just one other thing. Elaine made some, some statements there. What, what we do is we do, all developers in paying their permit fees and other escrow and other fees associated with any development pay for their price at, for fair. And, and we've determined what their, what their payments are to do developments. What, far from that, what we've done in the past is we've offered special deals for favored constituencies. And we've hopefully negotiated a few cents, a few, a few dollars so that we gave them huge benefits to develop. So that's what I'm trying to avoid. I want to have plain, simple, or even complex, but plain and reasonable rules consistently applied to all developers and extract ourselves from the, from the idea of selling Radnor by the foot to the, to various developers to let them overdevelop and, and to build more than they'd otherwise be allowed to. So I totally take offense at what Elaine said and, and her trying to impugn my statements and my character on this. This is absolutely, this is the right time, if we're going to do something, if we're going to spend money, if we're going to borrow money, now's the time to do it and spend the taxpayers' money for the taxpayers' work and let the developers build according to what they're allowed instead of giving special deals.
Don, community development?
Nothing to report.
Public works and engineering?
Nothing to report.
Library?
Yeah, there's a meeting, there'll be a meeting for the library this week on Thursday. And we'll be talking about construction and grants among other things.
Public health?
No report.
No report.
Parks and recreation?
Daddy-daughter dance took place, was a big success. I believe that Tammy sent us all an email with some photographs.
Personnel administration?
No report.
Old business?
I want to bring back to the board, you remember we had a, an item in front of us last year about the tax, the money from the parking going to WBA, which we pooled because of the RECT involvement. I'm going to ask staff to look at that and totally remove the RECT reference. And also probably Donna and I have discussed this a lot since we were the ones that seemed to be most concerned last time. Just the requirement will be that annually or semi-annually, they come to us and review the projects they've done. And if we're not happy with it, then we don't transfer the money the following year. We'll also encourage them to go to RECT for funding, of course.
So, so are you going to bring an ordinance to us for?
Yes, for discussion.
So, I mean, I think we're right back to where we started the meeting. So before you do that, I think it's probably prudent for us to get a determination as to whether it's appropriate to ask staff to do that, right? I mean, so, so, cause otherwise we're right back where we were at 6:30 tonight.
Engineers, not staff, remember that. He works for the commissioner.
No.
All right, new business? I have a, I just wanted to announce, I don't know whether the commissioners got this, but the Wayne Art Center is having two great exhibits. The National Art of Botswana Contemporary Arts and Craft is on a beautiful display at the art center. And also Expressions of Radnor, which is an exhibition of works of artists of Radnor Township, which is always beautiful and has a lot of beautiful paintings of our area. And there's going to be a reception on Sunday, February 22nd, 3 to 5. The public's invited. You get two for the price of one and the price is free. And I hope the commissioner will consider going and look at these exhibits. If you don't think, do stop in Sunday for the reception and to, to view this National Arts of Botswana and the Expressions of Radnor. And we invite the Radnor public to come out to see these exhibits. They're really worthwhile. Any other new business?
I just want to, I want to request an agenda item for next meeting. The agenda item should be the parameters of directing the solicitor. The agenda item should be the parameters of directing the solicitor. I think it's important that this board come to terms with what we discussed tonight. I agree that what Don just said, that if we're going to have the solicitor draft an ordinance, I think this board should vote whether or not that's worthy. It's true that we don't pay the solicitor extra money to do that, but he's resource-constrained. So if we ask him to do, if, if every commissioner on this board asks Solicitor Rice to draft an ordinance, he's not going to get to his regular work. So I think it's important that we discuss this at the next meeting, what the boundary is, what the, what the parameters are in which we can engage with the solicitor individually. You know, I think we all have somewhat of a sense there, but Bill, you have a different history. Jim, you may have a different history. I understand the history, but I can tell you, when I came onto this board, I was stopped from asking the solicitor to draft an ordinance by the, by the majority of the board at that time. They told me I had to have the votes to get that draft, to get that, to get the solicitor to create a draft. So I just want to play by the same rules that everyone has played by before.
And I, and I will say, over the years, I have asked the managers, the different managers, for things. Sometimes I had to wait one or two years because it wasn't a priority. The solicitor is not going to do any whim of commissioner if he doesn't have the time. The manager, you know, I've gone to manager over and over and over again, over the years, about, you know, getting this sewer project going, or getting this drain put in, or getting this curb, or getting these things done, and the managers have all been truthful with me and said, "Bill, we don't have the resources, we don't have the time," you know, "and you have to keep working on it." And it's the same thing with the solicitor. The solicitor is not going to bog himself down. If he has other things to do, he's going to tell the commissioner, "Sorry, I don't have time to do that." But the solicitor is a good resource because when you're talking about any type of ordinance, any idea you have, he writes ordinance for all kind of, you know, about all kinds of things, sign ordinances and all. So if, you know, if I was interested in doing something with the signs in Radnor, you know, I could say, "These are my thoughts," and then he could give me some sign ordinance and say, "Look, could you draft me an ordinance that incorporates this change in, in the sign ordinance? I want to take it to my board." So, but we'll have the solicitor, and we'll find out the next meeting.
And we'll, and we'll have a discussion. Have it on the agenda for discussion.
And just two, two other reasons for proceeding, as John indicated. One is, one of the problems that we encounter all the time is what comes out as the ordinance is the anchor. The draft becomes the anchor, and I feel like I fight this a lot, where I don't want that draft to be the anchor. I don't want to have to fight against a particular draft sometimes. So we should, we should be talking in concepts rather than particulars. And then the second thing is that idea that I, I think we, mistake we make all the time, we start in the particulars, and then we have long, detailed discussions about the particulars that we don't like before we decide on the general, the general policy. So, you know, the issue of what's the point at which we should not be directing the solicitor to come up with draft ordinances is, is a-
Yeah.
-a good thing to discuss. So, I mean, it's going to be on the agenda next time, and we'll-
I mean, an example, Don, is I've been trying for two years to get a, a draft of an ordinance that changes the time from, from, from you not going to do it from nine o'clock to eight o'clock. I have, I haven't even gotten that, solicitor hasn't even done that for me.
Yeah, but, but see, where I, all you, I mean, if you want that, you just make a motion and you get four people to, you can have that at the next meeting if you want it.
Yeah.
So, so the, the issue here is that, I mean, I just, John said it eloquently, so we'll get, we'll have that discussion next time, and it'll be informative for all of us.
Right, Bill, you can't do that. You can't direct-
Any other new business?
You can't, no, so I agree with John and Don. I, I think, though, that we have the rule. We all know what the rule is. It just was, you, you just spoke it plainly and clearly. So I, I don't, actually, it's kind of like, well, why are we even discussing it? Because now you're calling into question whether we can do this. The rule is, one commissioner cannot direct the solicitor to-
Well, that's-
-to write an ordinance, and it's just-
We'll find out about that.
And that's what we, that's what we need to confirm.
But see, I don't, I don't see it as quite black and white as, I mean, to me, there's, there's gray in that you're making requests to the solicitor, and that request involves the solicitor's time. But there's a point at which we say to the solic, you know, the point at which the solicitor does push back and say no, and there's a point at which a request might be inappropriate. But to me, it is appropriate to get elaboration on where that threshold is.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, if I may, just, I'd like to recognize our public work staff over the past several weeks with the road conditions, with some of the different storms and the different varieties there with ice, and that I think they've done a nice job with the gentlemen collecting trash, too, just been some very cold temperatures that they've worked through, and would just like to recognize them for the job that they've done. They've done a very nice job.
Here, here, great job. Public participation?
Dan Sherry, Wayne. A couple things. It wasn't really time for public comment when we were talking about the bond, but something that Commissioner Schaefer stated about Carfac and its five-year history. I believe that was an entity that was previously known as CBFAC, and I think one of their very strong recommendations was a moratorium on open space purchases. That was, of course, ignored by the board. So to claim that CBFAC or its successor, Carfac, is gospel insofar as this board is concerned is specious. Couple things. Commissioner Spingler made some assertions to Christina Peroni about the township solicitor not being subject to the very express prohibition regarding administrative policy. Again, to be clear, this is what administrative policy states. It is the intent of this charter that this board act as a body in relation to all township matters, all, all. No commissioner acting individually shall seek publicly or privately to direct the acts of township officials and employees. Now, is there anybody on this board that would like to state that the township solicitor is not a township official?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know whether, and we'll get that answer. Can I finish? You asked a question, you asked me.
I do.
May I?
Do you know, do you know why I know?
Can he finish?
Because it's nine point, since you asked the question, no. Rhetorical question, because it's an extraordinary assertion.
So you-
9.08, 9.08. I'm right now allowed to dialogue. If this proposed resolution, which is what it is, and not an ordinance, which has timing requirements, goes into effect, I can no longer dialogue with Commissioner Curly.
We're giving you the courtesy of speaking, and you cut him off.
That's why it's nice to be able to dialogue with him now.
You cut a commissioner off, he's trying to answer your question.
9.08, 9.08. Definitions, let me read to you.
May, may I, before you do it, may I tell you my question, and then you can tell me the answer to it?
Go.
So, so I am not sure whether the solicitor is an official of the township or an official of the Board of Commissioners, and that's what you had indicated earlier, Bill, that there was a, so I do not ask Bob Zienkowski's permission to speak to the solicitor. I ask Bob Zienkowski's permission to sleep, to speak to any other employee in Radnor, and in my five years, I've never spoken to one except through Bob and getting Bob's permission. So again, if that's a, if that's a violation of ethics codes, then let's have that out now. But, but I am proceeding under the assumption that there is nothing, that it's, it's completely appropriate for, for commissioners to engage directly with appointed officials. Now, I never, meaning the, the solicitor and the engineer, now I've never directed them to do anything, but I, but I do contact them routinely, I ask them questions routinely, and I make requests to them routinely.
And you, by your answer, understand the distinction. You can talk with them, there's no prohibition as to talking to them, but what did you just add at the end? "I've never directed them," which is, of course, what is prohibited by the charter. Direction, which is what we're talking about here. Now, when it comes to officials, 9.08 definitions, there's two types of officials in the township, Commissioner Curly, under the charter. There's elected officials, and then there's appointed officials.
All right, well, it's on the agenda for next, it's on the agenda for next meeting.
Non-individual, 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 non-individual are elected officials. They are, quote, as follows. "The term elected officials of the township shall mean the seven members of the board and the treasurer of the township." Those are the elected officials. "The term appointed officials of the township, of the township shall mean members of those boards, commissions, and authorities appointed by the board, the township secretary, township solicitor." Okay? He's an official, so when a commissioner, without the board's authorization, directs the solicitor to do something, you run afoul of administrative policy set forth in Section 2.09 H of Radnor's Code. That's directing staff.
All right, we have that.
You want to direct somebody to do something, this is how the process works, which is what you know it to be, Commissioner Fisher knows it to be, and Commissioner Booker. You bring it up at a meeting, under new business, okay? Again, I gave you the example when you had John Rice draft legal memorandum. He drafts legal memorandums as part of his duties and responsibilities, but if you want him to do something in that regard, you vote on it as a board. He's then authorized to do it. The whole money, the point of money is, is separate and apart. You have to authorize him to do it. The only time I know of this board being able to individually go to the solicitor and asking the solicitor to do something of their own volition is if they're seeking an ethics opinion from him. They're allowed to do that individually, but that's not what this is. Now, very importantly, because it's been stated a number of times tonight, that this is about a draft ordinance.
Okay.
Going by the article in the paper, it does not appear to be a draft ordinance.
It's on the agenda for the next meeting, Mr. Sherry. Thank you.
It appears to be-
Thank you.
What's put on, in fact, and what was voted on, or what John Fisher asked to be put on, was a discussion about draft ordinances. What I'm talking about tonight has not been reported as a draft ordinance. Do you understand that? That is being described in the press as a draft resolution. Ordinances fall under Article III, okay? And again-
Resolution ordinance, we know, we're discussing both.
I don't think you understand the distinction.
We understand the distinction.
And here's the reason why I don't think you understand the distinction. Because this was also, I believe it was blurted out by Commissioner Higgins, that this resolution is actually going to be on the agenda at the next meeting for voting on, presumably, because unlike an ordinance, it doesn't need an introduction in a time period. So if it is going to be getting on the agenda, to have that simultaneously on the agenda with a discussion with John Rice as to the appropriate protocols, as to how one should interact with staff, seems to me to be an act of extreme silliness.
Yeah.
You're actually going to be talking about a resolution, which now is coming under controversy, at least judging by the reactions of a couple people on this board, and yet in the exact same meeting, a resolution is going to be voted upon. Again, unlike an ordinance, which needs to be introduced, and there needs to be an elassment of time, I believe it's between 10 and 30 days, resolutions have no such time requirements. So again, I would, I would state that that is an important distinction, one I trust is not lost on Commissioner Higgins. That's the reason why he presumably wants it at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, okay? Because if it's going to, if it already has the willpower of a majority of people on this board, then that resolution presumably can be voted on and put into effect at the next meeting. So I would just bring that up, and again, I will reiterate my invitation, maybe I didn't make it very clear. I would like anybody on this board who feels comfortable to please bring to my attention the name of the individual who first approached John Rice to draft this resolution. I have my suspicions as to who that person is, but until I hear from that directly, that person directly, or somebody on this Board of Commissioners who will do it, since no one here seems too aggressive in terms of putting their hand up and saying, "That was me. I came up with that. I told John Rice to do it." Interesting how there appears to be a little bit of meekness.
All right, anything else?
But, but, but again, that would be very silly to have that at the same time that that resolution is going to affect. Lastly, Commissioner Spingler, you started ticking off a list of different ordinances that you went to the solicitor to draft for you. Could you be specific as to what year that occurred and what ordinances they-
They were all, they were all before you were born. Anything else?
They were all before I was born.
Yeah.
But you personally have gone to the township solicitor by yourself, not without authorization from the Board of Commissioners.
Let me just say-
You went to the, you went to the township solicitor, and you asked the township solicitor to draft an ordinance for you?
That's-
Is that what you said earlier? Because we'll go back and look at the tape.
I know.
Is that what you did?
You know, the thing is, the great thing about my ethics charges is that every time you amended it six times, it was because I was trying to straighten out the press and give them the facts. Oh, it was another gotcha moment. So you got enough gotcha moments. Thank you very much, Mr. Sherry.
Well, I don't understand the gotcha moments. Are you, we just now just acknowledge that-
Go look at the tape. It's all on tape. You have it.
So you, well, no, actually, that's my, that's my request for some specificity. You, I, I want to know what specific ordinances you had a township solicitor draft for you.
I don't, I don't have the recollection.
You don't have a recollection, but you remember doing that.
What's that?
But you remember doing that.
I remember working with the staff on the, on the-
That's not my question.
Yes.
That's not my question. My question is, you went to the solicitor and individually directed the solicitor to write an ordinance regarding a transfer tax, and you did that without authorization from the Board of Commissioners. Is that what you're saying right now?
Anything else, Mr. Sherry?
I thought so.
Anything else?
I thought so.
Anything else?
You don't want to admit to that now?
Anything else?
What, what an about face.
Anything else?
Anything else? Well, since you ask.
No, I'm sorry.
Again, the-
I'm sorry. That was my mistake.
That's your mistake? Well, okay, but since you ask, since you ask. I indicated when I, when I first spoke tonight that I will be bringing in private videographers to record the Ethics Board hearing, which is occurring at 7:00 on Thursday. I was a little surprised, again, that the, that that is being taken in the roll call room, given that at the last televised Ethics Board hearing, not hearing, rather, meeting,